Okay, this is the April 14th meeting of the zoning board of appeals. We're doing it webinar via Zoom. Participants and members of the audience, your image or and voice may be recorded. I'll go around and introduce everyone. I'm Lynn Ryan. Jim?
Aye.
That's Jim Royer. Dennis?
Vote.
Dennis Bartlett. Jenny's?
Here.
Jenny Zakatinsky. And Pat, that's Pat Jackson. And I just want you to know, we appreciate it because I know it was a stretch for you to get here tonight. So, thank you. Well, there's only five of us and it's in fairness to the petitioner, it's important to have five. Okay. Now that we've introduced everyone, I'm going to entertain a motion to open reopen the hearing. Continued hearing.
So moved.
So there's a motion in second, you got that, Leanne?
Yes, I do.
Okay. I'll go around for a roll call. I'm an aye. Jim?
Aye.
Danny? Jenny?
Aye.
I was gonna say Amy, but she can't vote. Uh, Pat? Okay, thank you. Would you, Amy, like to bring us through, there were two things. Has everyone had a chance to look at the paperwork that came last night, this morning?
Lynn, do you want me to promote Mr. Rhodes, Attorney Haverty, and Seth?
Yeah.
Okay.
If you could, it would help my side of it.
Yep, no problem.
I'm just wondering if everyone needs us to walk through everything that. I want to thank Amy because there was one thing she did at the last minute. I know at the last meeting, we were concerned that unless there was something in the HOA agreement that forewarned the homeowners association that they had certain obligations and certain things they couldn't do without coming back to us. And we felt that was important because we doubted that they were going to read the special permit. So Amy was gracious enough to add that into the homeowners association documentation. So, thank you, Amy, and if you want to direct us from here?
Sure, sure. Thank you, Chairman Ryan. And I do want to just preface everything by saying that I am the reason that everything was given to you so late. I've got, I've got too many kids and there's too much COVID and exposures and quarantines. And so it's been a rough couple of weeks, but we're all negative, so that's good, right? So what I did with the decision, if we want to start with the decision, Madam Chair had sent me an email with her suggested changes, which were all valid changes. So I made all of those. And essentially, it was, the first thing was, at some points, it was the Capes at Berlin or the Capes of Berlin. So I changed it, everything is of. And then we, on page three, a project summary, that's where we spell out that what we designate the affordable units and we designate which affordable units are two-bedroom. There's only one that's two-bedroom. So we designate how many bedrooms per affordable unit. So that can never change without having to come back to you guys. We added in, after Leanne and Lynn went through, it must have taken you guys forever to go through and figure out all of the meetings. But we did, so all of the meetings are, it's good to go now.
Leanne did that, thank you, Leanne.
That was great. On page five, on number five, it was, we still had shared Title V septic system, which is no longer the case. So that was deleted. And then I had a, I had a header missing on page eight. I didn't have minimum side yard. I had the space for it, but I didn't have the actual title. So then I put that in, the next title goes to, you know, goes down in the rotation. And then with, with the waivers, Attorney Haverty had noted what waivers are no longer necessary. So I put that in. So the waivers aren't necessarily taken out because you guys did vote on them previously. So all I did was I put, due to plan revisions, the waiver is no longer necessary. So we're just kind of keeping track of everything with this decision. And so, and then under 11, on page 11, under number, on condition number two, we made sure that this, the recorded decision with proof of recording will be filed with the town clerk. Now that I printed this out, I see we have a weird page break, which I will get rid of. And then on number five, we deleted if the development is owned by a private party because it will be owned by the homeowners association. So it will, it's not going to be accepted by the town. And then in number nine, we added some language that said that the applicant and the homeowners association shall be permanently physically, constructively, and financially responsible for the following. And that's all, you know, that's everything that the HOA is responsible for. And we did add in there the scheduling, overseeing, payment, and reporting of septic system testing and results to the Board of Health, which is required annually for each individual system. And then under 16, we put that, that's where we have the percentage of the affordable units. And so we added any and all fees and assessments levied on. And then number 17, we added a new condition, which is any revisions to the homeowners association documents that impact an affordable unit financially or otherwise must be submitted to this board for approval. So we're kind of trying to avoid a Whitney Estates, you know, recurrence.
Now, would that cover us if we're gonna have the HOA keep the screening and that, the strips, right?
Yep.
Does that need to go in there too?
That is, that's already been in there. That's already in there. And it's pursuant to the plan. So, you know, it's pursuant to the approved plan that this commission, that this board has approved. If we go on to the, to the HOA, to the homeowners association trust document, we put in there, so one of, these changes were all discussed at the last meeting. And then the changes that I made was that there shall be no parking allowed on the private way, which was agreed at the last meet, at the last meeting. and we also put in that the Board of Trustees will, will consist, one trustee will, shall be an owner of the affordable unit, which you guys requested. We deleted additional lots because Mr. Rhodes indicated that there will be no additional lots. And then we, we put in the, you know, the authority to assess and we put in that, you know, maintenance, repair, replacement of all common elements, including but not limited to the maintenance and testing required for the individual septic systems. Because you guys wanted to make sure that that was going to be, you know, an HOA requirement. And then we, and then further, we put in that all septic systems shall be inspected annually, any deficiencies in, if noted, that says in, it should say, yeah, I will change that. If noted during system inspection, shall be remedied by the property owner. And then, and then as Lynn was referring to, I added a section, I added Article V at the very end, which is compliance with the comprehensive permit decision. So what I did was I took all of the conditions that reference the homeowners association or would impact an affordable unit. And I put them right in here. I noted what conditions they were in the, so we can cross-reference if we had to.
And it says that they can't change that without coming back to the ZBA, right?
So any revision, that's, that's right in here. Any revisions to the homeowners association documents that impact an affordable unit financially or otherwise must be submitted to the board for approval. So it's in two places. It's in the actual comprehensive permit and it's in the, in the HOA docs.
Yeah, well, it just occurred to us that the HOA document may be read by the people buying the homes, but the comprehensive permit probably won't be.
Oh, I agree, I agree.
Do you have anything?
That should be Article 10, correct, not Article 5. The one before that I think was mismarked as Article 4 when it should be Article.
Well, that's why I put it, well, then that's your fault, not my fault. Because I went right after.
You are correct. We started the.
You know, it's funny, because when I was doing this, I thought, wow, we had a lot more art, I thought we had more than five. Okay, so I will change that to Article 10. I will also fix Article 4 to make that Article 9. So instead of 1V, it will be 1X. Okay, I can do that.
Do you have any other comments for us, Mr. Haverty?
No, we're satisfied with the changes that were made.
Is the plan, the latest date of the plan there? In the, for a reference? In the comprehensive.
Seth can probably answer that question.
I'm sorry?
So I think Seth can answer that question.
So, good evening. We had forwarded the title sheet, which has a full tabulation of the revision dates for each sheet. And I believe that the modification does reflect that.
Okay, so should we somewhere at the end make reference to the latest date of revision for each of the pages? Is that what we should do or what should we do to make sure that it's part of the comprehensive permit?
I believe that's on page four already of the comprehensive permit. It shows the last revised February 3, 2021.
Is that the last time that any of the pages were updated, Seth?
So that's the last, every time there's an update, the title sheet reflects the modified date. And not all of the pages were updated at that time. But if you were to refer that title sheet, it shows you what the last date that you guys reviewed it and modifications requested were made.
But that, that February 3, 2021 would be the revision date for the cover sheet, correct?
Correct.
Does anybody have any questions of the petitioner or Amy or? Do we feel confident that we can close the hearing? Amy, does that sound good to you?
It does, it does, Madam Chair. I don't have anything further and I don't think the applicant has anything further according to Mr. Haverty, Attorney Haverty.
Okay. So I would entertain a motion. What we will do will be close the hearing and then we will discuss voting on the papers that have been presented to us. So could I have a motion, please, to close the hearing?
I'll make a motion. Go ahead, Jenny.
I will make a motion to close the hearing.
Seconded.
Okay, so it was Jenny and Jim. Okay, I'm an aye, Jim?
Aye.
Danny?
Aye.
Jenny?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
It was a unanimous decision to close the hearing. We'll take no further testimony. We'll just discuss the situation with counsel. Counsel, could you explain to folks what their options are and what the consequences of their options would be?
Sure. So, so it's the same as with the actual comprehensive permit that we, that we discussed once and, or maybe years ago, I can't even remember. But what we have here is a modification. We are only allowed to discuss the modification. And therefore, if the modification is denied, the applicant has the right to go back to HAC. He has the right to appeal our decision on the modification. But he also has the right, he also has a comprehensive permit. You know, so, so I guess, you know, this will get built in, in any event. Now, the previous approval required a condominium association. It required shared, you know, shared septic, shared wells. The applicant has given us, you know, written evidence from DEP that they won't allow the shared, you know, the shared septic systems. So I think that if this did get appealed to the HAC, the HAC would, would take a look at another state agency's decision and probably back that up. So what I think the benefit of this decision gives this board is what we just went over, which is that we, I think we took two meetings to review the homeowners association documents to make sure that all of our concerns were addressed in that document. And then we've now tweaked that even further to put the conditions that we think are important into the homeowners association document. But that being said, you know, I'm not a member of the zoning board of appeals, so I wouldn't tell you how to vote ever. So.
Well, we just want guidance as to what ifs.
Right, and so that is the what if.
Anyone have anything they want to discuss or say or? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So, Madam Chair, what I thought we could do this time, because there are a lot less waivers, I thought maybe we could do the waivers as a, as a so-called consent calendar that we do at town meetings, where I will state the waiver and then if anyone has an objection to the waiver, they can, they can just say hold and we can vote on all the rest. And then the hold items, we can go back and discuss. Would that help maybe?
Thank you. That's a good idea, Amy.
So, so if I could start, we have more than one principal structure on a lot. And here, the plans, actually, this waiver, we don't, this waiver is no longer necessary. So we're gonna keep that one there. We have the waiver of dimensional regulations. And so we have the minimum lot area is 80, 80,000 square feet. Lot 1A is 24, lot 2A is 24, lot 3A is 24, lot 4A is 24, lot 5A is 24, lot 6A is 20, lot 7A is 17, lot 8A is 20, lot 9A is 16, lot 10A is 24, lot 11A is 24, and lot 12A is 25. All of them are under 80. Frontage is 200.
But I just ask you on the first one, are we gonna vote on these as a block or do you want to vote on each individual one?
No, if we can, we could vote on them as a block unless anybody has a concern. So we, and then minimum frontage is 200 feet. And we have 100, lot 1A is 128. Although, well, it's 122 on South Street. On the project roadway, it's 128. It doesn't matter, neither one meets 200. We then have 105, 92, 97, 32, 89, 91, 91, 46, and 68. We have 188 and then we have 100. So all are under 200. The minimum lot width is 100 feet. We have 92, 97, 32, 89, 91, 91, 46, and 58. All of them are under 100. The front yard is 50. And then we're only looking at waivers for lot 1A, which is 30. Lot 6A, which is 47.9, very close. Lot 7A, which is 49.5. And lot 12A, which is 28.4. And then for the minimum side yard, we're only looking at certain lots, which is 4A, which is 14 and 18.6, 7A, 8.9, and 14.5. 8A is 18.6, 11A, 14.5, and 12A is 15. And then for the minimum rear yard, we're looking at 1A, which is 31.7, 2A, 35.1, 3A is 29.8, and 9A is 16.5. With regard to the, the Town of Berlin subdivision rules and regulations, we have allowing more than one dwelling per lot that is no longer necessary. With the Board of Health regulations, we have multiple uses to allow the system to serve the multiple dwellings on each lot. That is no longer necessary. We have hydraulic overloading to allow a loading of 550 GPD as allowed by 310 CMR 2.71. And it is, it is still necessary for this project. For the distances, we have to allow for reduced distances between the septic tank and each unit house cellar wall. We have to allow sewer length in excess of 100 feet. For alternate systems, we have to allow for the IA technology. And then we have for the well regulations, we have Section 4.1 to allow a well offset of 10 feet to a sewer line. For trenches, to allow reserve area to be located between trenches. And that's it. So if there were no holds, then we can just, we could have a motion to grant the waivers as, as written. And then a second.
I'll entertain a motion if someone cares to make it, to approve the waivers, the necessary waivers in the comprehensive permit. Would someone care to make that motion?
So moved.
Okay, Jim, is there a second?
Second.
Danny, seconded. Any discussion on the waivers before we vote? If not, I'll take a roll call vote. I'm an aye, Jim?
Aye.
Danny?
Aye.
Jenny?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
Okay, I think that's a unanimous vote, Leanne.
So, so now we have the conditions, which we've, we have definitely, you know, we've already run through. And so now we have the vote on the modification, the modification of the comprehensive permit. So only, we're, again, we're only voting on the modification. Everything from your prior comprehensive permit still stands. That has not been adjusted by this modification.
So you're looking for us to vote?
Yes.
For the modification?
To approve the request for the modification to the comprehensive permit on remand, application of Capes of Berlin to allow for the proposed development at 58 State Street. I'm sorry, South Street.
We can move it to Boston, right?
Yeah, my former building was at State Street.
I was in, worked in that section too. Would someone care to make that motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, Jim made the motion, Jenny seconded. Any further discussion? If not, I'll take a voice vote. I'm an aye, Jim?
Aye.
Danny?
Aye.
Jenny?
Aye.
Pat?
And then, Madam Chair, if we could, if we could take a vote to authorize the chairman, Linda G. Ryan, to sign this decision on behalf of the board?
Don't move.
Okay, moved by Jim and seconded by Danny. Any discussion? If not, I'll take a roll call vote. I'll vote for myself, I'm an aye. Jim?
Aye.
Danny?
Aye.
Jenny?
Aye.
Pat?
So I will, I will fill in the blanks, Madam Chair, and get this over to you and Leanne so you can, so you can sign it and then file it with Eloise.
One of the things I would like to do is to have one of us initial the plans that are gonna be the final plans. And I would, I like to initial all of the pages. And I would like to initial the pages of the HOA agreement or document. It just, when you have two or three different ones floating around, it's kind of nice to know what the final one was. And therefore, if it has initials on each of the pages, you know that this was the final one. Anyone object to that or have any thoughts on that?
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, because we've got several sets of plans and we've got, you know.
Yep.
So we just have to make sure that we've got a set that have initials, so we know what plans are what plans. I want to say I missed Mr. Minich this evening.
Yep, he's not in attendance.
We don't need any further vote or anything, do we, Amy?
You do not, Madam Chair. Attorney Haverty, did we, did we miss anything?
I don't believe so, I think we're all set.
Okay.
Mr. Rhodes, you could at least come on and say thank you.
I had to have my son unmute me, I'm not that literate. Thank you.
At least you don't look like a, what was the, in the jazz chambers there, they had someone looking like a cat with the filter on.
Oh, they're kitty.
That was cute. Okay, we have other things with the hearings closed, we have voted. We don't have any bill payroll or anything, right? So what?
Thank you, Madam Chair, remember for the board.
Thank you, Attorney Haverty. Thanks, Mark.
And thank you, Amy. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
We actually brought you to a good point, Mark. I mean, things are selling like hotcakes. I can't believe the little two bedrooms down here going for over $700,000 on 0.11 acres. Who's on with us?
We have Chris Keefe, Louise Gianda, and Mark Rhodes is still signed in.
I think you guys are all set with me?
Yep.
Um, well, I'm not. I had a question about something else. And maybe it's when, you know, when the meeting's over, if I may. What other business do we have, Leanne?
Just to approve.
Would someone care to move the minutes?
I will approve, I, yes. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
As presented, is there a second, please?
Second.
Okay, Jim, second. I'm an aye, Jim?
Aye.
Danny?
Aye.
Jenny?
Aye.
And Pat?
Aye.
Okay. Just as a point of information, does everyone know that Mr. Minich sold his home?
Yep.
Yes, I saw that.
I did not.
Kind of interesting, huh?
Hmm.
I'm not surprised though, Lynn.
I'm sad, you know.
I am also.
You know, but again, it may also be a life choice, you know, maybe, I don't know where. I don't know where he's going, but, um, does anyone, um, not have or hasn't received or wants to see any of the paperwork just for posterity?
No. I, I agree. I say no also.
Okay. Okay, if there's no, if there's no further business before the board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Oh, one other thing I wanted to ask you, as it gets lighter later, is it more difficult for like Jenny and Pat and Suzie to come here for six o'clock?
Yes. Yes.
Would seven o'clock work better?
It would have.
All right. How do you, how do the guys feel? Jim and Danny, does that, is that a problem for you?
Fine with me.
Fine with me.
Okay. So, you know, the daylight.
Right.
So why don't we, Leanne, make a note of the fact that we want to meet at 7:00 PM? At least for the summertime. We don't have any outstanding, I thought we would be deluged as soon as the, um, we started meeting again. You don't have anything in the queue.
Nobody can afford the lumber.
Although, Leanne, did you send us something, um, Louis Ramus or? I'm trying to recall the name, something about bringing, uh, material to Old Central?
Yeah, that, um, I don't, well, the ZBA got copied on it, so I forwarded it. But that was really an earthwork committee and, um,
Oh.
the select board, but they copied the ZBA, so I forwarded it.
Oh, okay. So that doesn't actually involve us. Okay.
Okay, um, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn and we'll be meeting at seven o'clock next month. We'll be missing Amy greatly.
Is there anything? We don't have anything right now for the meeting?
Right now, we have.
The deadline is nine o'clock tonight. So unless something comes in tonight to Eloise, there'll be, there'll be no hearings at next month's meeting.
We still gonna have a meeting?
We'll still have a meeting, yes. Um, you know, we'll still have minutes to approve. But, and if anyone wanted to come and talk to us, we need to be available. But if someone has a better option, if they want to avail themselves of, as long as we have three people that are gonna show up, I think it would be fine. You know, we could hold a legitimate meeting. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion and second by Jim and then second by Danny. I'm an I?
Aye.
I'm, okay, that was Jenny or Pat?
Yes, both. Whatever.
Jenny and Patty, yes.
I'm an I.
Danny?
Aye.
And Susanna?
Aye.
Okay. So we're adjourned.